For this evening at 7:05 PM. Welcome, everybody. We're gonna, I'm President Christensen. I will ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Good evening, I'm Anubam Chutsum. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, I'm Judy Westra. Thank you for coming out on this stormy evening.
Good evening, Patrick Keough. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Patty McCoyn, thanks for being here tonight.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picard, and it's nice to see everyone.
Sean Wilson, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and your team?
Good evening, Superintendent Monica Merritt. Welcome. So glad to see everyone in the audience this evening. We had a great day. I'm looking forward to telling you a little bit about it a little bit later on this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. Want to thank her for being here, taking our minutes. Also, Ms. Carly Rais, our Assistant Director of Communications and Marketing, to be here to keep our technology needs on track. I'd like to ask the remaining members of staff to introduce themselves to you.
Good evening, I'm Curtis Gwitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie McMillan, I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, I'm Abdul Madun, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement.
Okay, and then Saye, will you please introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. I'm Saye Puar, and I'm a senior at Canton High School.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on to Section A, Adoption of the Agenda and Approval of the Consent Agenda. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt our agenda and improve our consent agenda. It's Act 250806.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Westra. Dr. Merritt, can you please take us through the agenda?
Thank you, President Christensen. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, the Human Resources Department has been busy hiring champions for our district and readying our classrooms for the start of the school year next year. I mean, uh, next week. Not next year. We have leads, resignations, and retirements. We also have the approval of minutes from our special meeting. That was on August the 13th, as well as our regular meeting on August the 13th. Finally, we have the final reading of Policy 3220. That's Professional Staff Evaluation.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. Oh. Get out of here. Motion passes, 7-0. All right, Mr. Madun, can you please take us through Human Resources?
Yes, we have quite a few today, so we're gonna do it a little bit different. I'm going to read off everyone's name, and everyone stand when their name is read. And we will meet on the hallway, and I will give you your present from us. It's a lot of chocolate. So first, I would like to welcome Amal Awadala. He's a classroom teacher at Bentley. Erica Bailey, classroom teacher at Dotson. Megan Burbom, physics teacher at Plymouth. Juliana Frye, elementary classroom teacher at Dotson. Derek Ramza. He's co-teaching at Discovery in the Resource Room class. Padma Fathi Kalanmarah. She was a computer programming teacher at Salem. Julie Kazin, CI teacher at Salem. I can't see if so many people standing, starting to stand up, I can't see them. Kirk Coleman, social worker at Plymouth. On to the next page. Kaya Lee Hood, elementary classroom teacher at Field. April McCreary, EI categorical classroom teacher at Workman. Karen Meyer was a resource room teacher at Liberty. Jill Sanabria, a nurse at Holstein. Tahera Vanner, a social worker at Dotson. Christopher Vassal, EI classroom teacher at West. Rachel Wills, early on service provider at Allen. And I have two more that I'm gonna mention right now, so I'm gonna take them all at once. Was, is that a separate one with the administration?
It's okay.
Kimberly Doeman, who was the new principal at Starkweather. And last but not least. Hannah Zorkat, who is now the Associate Director of Finance and Accounting. Those are all our new hires for today. Can we give them a round of applause? I want to take all of them out and give them their sugar high.
I have the honor of recognizing teachers that are retiring in our school district. Does Ms. Carly have it up for me? You're wonderful. Thank you so much. So first, I would like to congratulate our science teacher at Discovery Middle School, Jennifer Kajkowski. Also, math teacher at Plymouth High School, Michelle Majapan. And our business education teacher at Salem, Lesni Osborne. Congratulations to you on your retirement and all of the years that you have dedicated to Plymouth Gate Community Schools. Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes HR? Yeah, okay, great. So we will move on to Board Committee Reports in Action. And first up is the President's Report. I am thrilled to be sharing a President's Report with you today. This is my first. So I just wanted to extend a warm welcome back to school. Myself and many of my fellow board members had the opportunity to attend the welcome-back celebration this morning at Salem at the auditorium for many of our teachers who are starting their professional development and growth today and setting up their classrooms and everything else. There was so much energy and excitement in the air. It's really hard not to carry that out the door with me. I've been, I feel like I'm Cloud Nine all day, really. So I do wanna extend a message to our students and families. I hope we're all enjoying this last week of summer and preparing for the start of school this coming Tuesday. I know we are, at my house, too. So I know this year will be another fantastic year at PCCS. Just in terms of board business, yesterday, we did have a special meeting to receive updated training on our superintendent evaluation tool. During this meeting, we also were able to draft our goals as a board and the superintendent's goals for the '24-'25 school year as well. So it was a good, productive meeting. We want to remind student, staff, and the community also, just as a board, we love to hear from you, and we also love to support our students and staff in any special activities or events. So please don't hesitate to reach out to us via email, because we would love to, if our schedules allow, come out and see you guys and see all the great things that we're doing here. So that concludes my report today. Onto Student Performance and Achievement with Members Sooduk.
Thank you, President Christensen. We have our first meeting of the school year, Wednesday, September 18, at 5:00 PM in this room, and I welcome everyone to attend.
Policy with Member McCoyn. Should be Vice President McCoyn.
So we actually met tonight, and we had mainly old business. Some of it we have had to defer because we had questions for our legal counsel, and they were unable to attend, so we will go back, we'll roll back to those later. But just for awareness, there's a couple, there's occasionally policies that are just completely going to be rescinded and taken out of our book based on the law changing. And so we have to be compliant with state law, so sometimes we have policies that have, are no longer, the law has been rescinded, so we take those out. So when that comes about, you'll know why. And so we are going to continue to meet on the second board meeting of every month, 5:30 down the Collaboration Room, which is way down to the end of this space. Everybody is welcome to attend. In December, we will be meeting at the first meeting, because we only have one in December, but we have a lot to get done, so everyone is welcome, and please, come.
Thank you. Okay, Finance and Operations with Treasurer Keough.
So for the second time in a row, we were able to skip our Finance and Operations meeting, and I was super excited about that to enjoy some of the last bits of summer. But our next Finance and Operations meeting is coming up Thursday, September 5, 5:00 PM in this room. Come to the most exciting meeting that you can possibly have.
Yes, please. It is so much fun today. Okay, and then on to Student Voice and Action Committee. I'll actually speak on the behalf of this, and then Saye, if you want to add anything, please go ahead. So we are, we have, we have yet to publish our schedule. Typically, we do meet once a month, so that is something that we'll be working with the student co-chairs to develop, right around this time of year is where we really focus on the membership effort. So you will see more information around how students can apply to SVA. Saye, do you want to add anything?
I have nothing to add, except that our meetings, our next meeting will take place at the Canton High School Media Center at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Onto Administrative Reports and Recommendations. Dr. Merritt.
Thank you, President Christensen. I share your excitement about our opening day gathering this morning at, I'm like, wait, what is it? At Salem Auditorium. I will tell you this, we had the power that went out in Plymouth yesterday, and as the air was getting going this morning, it was 100 degrees, and we got there, air was working overtime, and I thought, all of these things are not going to steal our joy, because there's nothing as exciting as the beginning of the school year. And when I tell you that our teachers, our administrators, they came and the energy delivered, I absolutely thank President Christensen, Treasurer Keough, Secretary Westra. They all represented all seven of you so well. President Christensen gave such a warm welcome to start the school year. We had our students, it was our PSEP quartet that got to perform, so it really grounds us about why we are here, having that student performance. And then we met this amazing gentleman. Now, you guys know I am high-energy, but when I tell you, Ms. Rail told me she found somebody who matched my energy times 10, and I had to meet him. We had Mr. Hamish Brewer, and he was able to really motivate and inspire our staff. I will tell you in a nutshell, some of the gems that he left for all of our teachers. We talk and we brag about our teachers being our treasure trove of talent here in our district. He reminded them and poured into them and let them know that you are enough. Show up as your authentic selves for students each and every day. He talked about the importance of relationships, powerful relationships, leaving a legacy, and that has to happen in the moment, because tomorrow is not promised to anyone, and that work that teachers are doing with students each and every day is truly leaving a legacy. He talked about really making a choice. We all get to choose what attitude we have each day, and so we want to be mindful of that play, because it's fun. We have an opportunity to really change lives, and that's really not a job, it's a passion and an opportunity. Speaking of opportunities, he said, children are always opportunities, they are never obligations. So that was just a great reminder. So again, I think he really just helped get our school year started, and we just had a great response, and looking forward to the next 180 days. I reminded everyone about all of the accolades that we had last year, and I think it's probably, it was one of the most exciting years, and I can only imagine that that's going to continue to move forward, because our teachers, our staff are fired up. They then had the opportunity to engage in some important professional development. So we talk about, how do we continue to do this work of the dynamic plan? We know we have to build and sustain these relationships, because they are key. We have to make sure that we are developing highly effective teams and making sure that they are engaging in professional development. So we have an idea about the best instructional practices to give every student what they need to succeed. So I'm so proud of our teachers, our staff, our team here at Central Office to provide that training for them. We had a power outage, go figure, once again, at 11 o'clock, just that PSEP in Plymouth, but they got through their PD and were able to keep moving forward. So again, thank you, everybody, for a wonderful start to the '24-'25 school year. Now, one thing that made us sad, I would say, last week, we were looking forward to celebrating in the Back to School Bash, which is the community celebration of the start of the school year. We had a last-minute pivot, just based on some road construction that was taking place at the Salem Bus Loop. But I'm so happy to announce that the Back to School Bash is on and is being re, what is the new title? Fall into Fall? Fall into Fall. And that will take place on Thursday, September the 26, from 4:30 to 7:00 PM at the PCEP Bus Loop. We're still going to have our games, our food, plenty of fun. What we really like about this opportunity is it has our families, our students invited for tours of our building, so it's really important. I know people said, hey, why don't you just move it to another location? I think that's really been key when we get feedback from our Back to School Bash. People want an opportunity to get into, PSEP and get into the building, so we'll have those tours. We have an opportunity to meet district staff, get your questions answered, look at all of the offerings that we have in PCCS. So please come out and join us on Thursday, September the 26, from 4:30 to 7:00 PM at the PCEP Bus Loop. This evening, I want to take a moment to express our gratitude to the Native American Heritage Fund for its generous support as we prepare to launch an exciting new phase for Canton High School that builds towards the future. As you are aware, we applied for the grant to assist with the financial cost of our transition to the Cobra mascot. PCCS grant, we were awarded $145,894 to support the rebranding of Canton High School's new mascot, the Cobras. Now, the NHAHF is a Michigan public body that distributes grants to schools, colleges, and universities, and local governments to support initiatives to improve curricula and resources, bless you, related to Native American issues and mascot and energy revisions. When we looked to receive this, the ceremony will take place on September the 13, and we are definitely inviting all that are able to attend. It will be in Battle Creek. Give you more information as I receive information, but we will definitely be there to receive our check. We will provide the board and our community with an updated cost to our transition plan. If you recall, early on, when we were first given our estimates, we were looking that it could be anywhere between 230 to 300, upwards of 300,000. We know that we have received, I'll say, some relief. Good or bad, we had the tornado that impacted our turf fields. So through our insurance, we were able to replace the turf field and the logos that are in there, so we will not have to pay for that cost. Also, with the new stadium, as a part of the bond, that turf field will be covered, so we'll only pay for the east turf field, that's approximately $12,000. We will have the ability to replace all uniforms, and when we look at this grant, the total amount for fall, winter, and spring uniform replacements will be covered under this grant amount. So that is something that we're very fortunate, because that will really allow us to do this in one cycle, instead of having to take that over multiple years. We had, we've already done some adjustments, I will say, in terms of some paints and things along that, along those lines. We have some equipment that will need to be purchased, such as, I'm gonna say, chairs, tents, things along of those natures. And so we will give you an updated cost, but I think all in, we planned and we budgeted for $350,000, because we were not aware if we were going to receive any grant funds. With this, 145 is, in addition to the reduced cost, more than likely, we'll be coming in at about 100,000 or less that will have to come from the general fund. So again, we will get some estimated costs, we will get that to you as a board and share that information with the community as we move forward. I'll bring closure this evening, just with a little conversation around our students, because I can't miss an opportunity to just brag on them. The Park Players Theater Company is proud to present its first show of the '24-'25 season. This is The Theory of Relativity. The show examines the links between all through life's shared experiences, both hilarious and heartbreaking, with a seemingly unrelated collection of songs, scenes, and monologues. The show will run in the Gloria Logan Auditorium at Salem High School on September 13 at 7:00 PM and September 14 at 2:00 PM. And all tickets are available on the Park Players website and will be available at the door. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay, on to Teaching and Learning with Ms. Rail.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk to you and do an update on the summer programming that took place over the last couple of months. Well, I don't know about you, but I remember just, it seems like yesterday, I was standing here talking about end-of-year data, and I cannot believe that it is almost September. But here we are. So I'm gonna do a quick, high-level overview about our summer programming, similar to what I've done in past years, where I kind of talk about and share around the programs that took place, how many students took part in those programs, some of the high-level data, and then just open it up to questions for you. So with that, the challenges that we seek to address in the summer are mitigating any of the potential loss that can happen over summer, especially for some of our students with the greatest areas of risk and need. Also, thinking about student voice, engagement, and something that we launched a couple of years ago, which you'll remember as we talk a little bit more about our camps, is really looking at ways to have our students engage in new and innovative experiences that might spark their passion and their interest for something that they want to explore more in their future. As we always look at attending and attaching back to our dynamic plan goals and objectives, you're gonna see something that looks a little different on these two slides than you've seen in the past, because these are the updated overall objectives from teaching and learning in each area. So in Goal A, of course, we're looking at increasing achievement and eliminating and eradicating our achievement gaps. So this is the updated teaching and learning, all-encompassing student growth and learning objective. Not gonna read these ad nauseam, they'll be here, so people can dive into them as well. Goal B, we seek to ensure that we are implementing a positive, productive, multi-tiered systems of supports to really enhance academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs for our students. Incorporating student voice. As we look at what we've done over the past few summers, a lot of what's happening in summer is spilling over into the year. I'll give you a great example. AAPI, Asian American and Pacific Islander History Class, was a camp a couple of years ago. Now, we have a course that runs at PSEP. So a lot of things that are happening in summer are giving us a lot of input about what students are engaged in, passionate about, want to do more about. You'll remember, we talked early on about esports, and at the end of this last year, we talked about how we had some state-level champions in esports. Those things started with a germination in summer and have really grown out since then. So we're always interested to hear what our students are just passionate and interested in, so we can build and build. And then being recognized as a leader and innovator in student learning and growth. Quick overview of the camps that ran and the programs that ran this summer. Academic and Enrichment Camps for K-12. Elementary and Middle School Summer Academy, our EO, English Learner, Multilingual Learner Jump Start Program. ESY, Extended School Year. ASD, Autism Spectrum Disorder Center-Based Program. Rise Up Kindergarten to Preschool. So this is for our infant preschool special education students. School social work sessions, credit recovery, credit advancement, and transition support for incoming sixth and ninth graders. And again, I'm gonna do a high-level overview, but just to put it into context, over the last couple of months, 6,106 student enrollment served 5,589 individual students over the summer. It's an amazing thing that a lot of people come together and do in the summer. I'm gonna thank them at the end. 162 teachers, 63 support staff. While some people could have been on their boats, or just enjoying bonfires, or doing those types of things, they came together in the summer to really uplift our students and do some amazing work. Our Academic and Enrichment Camps, this is our logic model, but I'm just gonna hit a couple of high points on it. Couple of major things we want to do here. One I touched on earlier. We're trying to look at, how do we increase our students' participation in certain things? Clubs, activities, new classes. But also getting a good gauge on, what is it that sparks that interest and passion in our students? Because that informs us a lot in our curriculum development work, and also, what do we provide for our students moving forward? All attached to the college career and life readiness models and our learner profile. So June 24 to August 15, you'll see this spans much of the summer. 115 camp sessions ran, 54 unique camps. I'm gonna show you a screen that will show you built out what those are. You'll just see them quickly, but dive in later and love to talk more anytime. 1,904 total enrollments serving 1,015 students. What's amazing about this is, four years ago, this didn't exist, right? This is something that we launched post-COVID to think about, how do we engage our students differently? And we've learned a lot about engagement and excitement from these camps. Participating families responded to a survey. 92 families did respond. 100% of respondents said that they hope this program continues in the future, and you'll see some of the things there. More of this, more of this, more of this. The next slides, I'm gonna show you just briefly, are each of the camps built out. So this is a list of all the elementary camps that ran, and I'll show you some photos of our students engaging in those camps. We'll just look at them quickly, because like I said, we're gonna do a high-level overview in this presentation. And these are all in the decks that are available to the public, too, so you can see. But you'll see everything from art to STEAM to a lot of things about reading and writing and literacy in a camp format. So when you see our young people, you walk in there, they're engaging, and it's so exciting. There's so much excitement in those rooms. You'll see everything and anything happening. In our middle school camps, things, we start to build out a little more, even more intentionality, narrow the focus a little bit. Everything from careers, careers in architecture. Learn to be a DJ camp, which is a new camp this year, which sounds cool on the surface, and it is, but what it's really about is entrepreneurship, budgeting, mathematics, all around, you know, engagement and music and something that in the future, I can make some pretty decent money at, as a young person. Esports, having fun with Excel. For some of us, we'd be like, hmm, that sounds exciting, right? But it's exciting for our young people, right? And again, some photos of our students engaging in these camps. High school, here's where we start to narrow even more. Thinking about things like chess camp, STEM camp, pre-physics, looking at all the spectrum from our students who have some additional risk to our most accelerated students that need a push more. Bioethics study, IB support. And again, photos of our students engaging in them. Additionally, we run academic support programming in the summer. Our K-8 Summer Academy has been running for many years. Very intentional, project-based curriculums around STEM, literature-based, high-interest programs. 171 students participated, and this is based on eligibility. And I want to go back and say something very important to our community as we look ahead. These camps were run free of charge, with one exception, and that's credit attainment, this summer, again, using funds from our grant funding. Those funds ran out this year. So we still have funds moving forward called 23G, My Kids Back on Track. It's a state-funding grant, and we'll be able to use that for some programs for eligible students. But like our camps, for example, if we run them again next year, we're gonna have to run them at a minimal cost for our students, just enough to break even, so that we can just provide those opportunities for students. But I want our community to know that up in advance. Summer Academy, 171 students. 82% of families reported that the program was valuable for their child. 97% of students now believe that even though the work is hard, they can learn it. And so when we're looking at this, we're looking at building those skills. Short camp, intensive, building the skills, and especially those kind of feelings of, I can do this, I'm engaged in this, I see how this connects for me. Again, some photos of our students and staff engaging in the camps. EL and MLL Jump Start, this is for our students who are multilingual learners. 147 students participated. 98% of our young five to kindergarten, young fives and kindergarten young fives to third-grade students indicated they enjoyed the program. 95% of third through eighth grade students shared that they're better prepared for this fall. That's one of the purposes of a summer, is making sure that we're preparing kids, keeping them on track for the fall. Some photos again. And please, if you're watching at home, check these photos out in more depth later, because it's, they're just so amazing. The looks on young people's faces, going in those rooms is just an experience. Our ASD Center-Based Programs, we had 54 students who participated this year. Seven preschool slash elementary and two middle school, high school post-secondary classrooms ran. Additionally, push-in speech and OT support. And again, these are, these camps are designed to support our students' IEP goals, Individualized Educational Program goals throughout the year. So it's very So it's very individualized and intentional. Rise Up Preschool, this is for our students coming out of our IPSEP program, moving to kindergarten. Nine students participated this year, and again, this is about building their skills to be kindergarten-ready. Social Work Sessions, 15 students participated this summer, and this was to help provide additional social work and kind of meet those needs, because as we continue across this state, across this nation, there is a significant shortage of social workers, so we want to make sure that we're keeping our compensatory services in place throughout the year. Nine through 12 Summer Programming is the most historic programming for summer in PCCS. Two programs have run for years. One is Credit Advancement, allowing students to take an additional course to free up something in their schedule later, or to replace a grade, because they feel like, oh, I've got this grade here, but I really want to improve my grade, so I want to take a course in the summer to increase my grade. 398 students enrolled this summer in 579 courses for Credit Advancement. 384 out of those 398 earned credit, 97% credit attainment. Credit Recovery, recovering credit for a course you did not pass the first time. 658 students enrolled this summer in 1,105 courses. 88% of those students earned credit this summer. And again, as we continue to build the skills for students, and help them stay on track to graduate. Additionally, throughout the summer, we embed supports throughout all of the programs we run. E.L. support, support for students with IEPs, and support for social, emotional, and mental health. So we have mental health professionals onsite if students need them as well. And the final program that we run in the summer is Transition Support. So just recently, within the last couple of weeks, we've had WEB, What Everybody Needs Program for Incoming Sixth Graders. 1,029 sixth graders were supported by 10 WEB advisors and 240 student leaders, link crew at the high school. 1,517 students, six staff leaders, 336 student leaders. Understand, please, that WEB and LINK run throughout the year. Kicks off in the summer to transition our students in, provide support throughout the year to ensure that they have all the support that they need as they engage in their school year. Thank you to the staff. I want to name everybody really quickly by name that led a program this summer. Some of these folks are here, and they're welcome to stand up if they want, but I just want to recognize everyone who led a program, coordinated a program, this summer. Heather Schramm, Hawanya Urquhart, Kason Sharp, Ashley Voitas, Kimberly May, Danies Farhat, Sharon Kerr, Karen Johnston, Steve Bouye, Derek Southwick, Lauren Cummings, Kitty Yelmroth, Chandra Jones, Anthony Ruela, Hal Hurd, and every member of the Teaching and Learning Team. So please join me in giving them a round of applause for all the work they did this summer. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Raoul. I'll start over with Member Wilson.
So as you, great presentation, thank you. As you look to next year, understanding that there may be some funding constraints, is the thought process, you did a great job of collecting feedback from everyone, is the thought process that you may offer less options specifically around the camps, and more specific to the ones that received the highest feedback?
Yep, we will, I would say we are going to attempt, if all possible, to offer everything. If, you know, the camps will be dependent on enrollment. So we'll have a minimal fee, enough that, like I said, it pays for itself, but those camps have always been dependent on enrollment. So what you're seeing, even those 54 unique camps, 119 or whatever sessions they were, those are, we don't run them unless there's at least 10 young people or better in a camp. So, and there have been times in the past couple of years where we've had hundreds of kids on waiting lists for camps, just because we're staff-bound and stuff. So all signs indicate that we'll be able to run them again, because, just because of the interest in them. We just want to be really upfront and transparent with folks that grants we'll still fund, like the credit recovery pieces, the Summer Academy pieces, but when we get to those kind of additional things, that, you know, the funds won't be there for that in the same way. So thank you for asking that question.
Minimal fee, gotcha.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
So thank you, this was great. Especially where you talked about the number of kids who went to the WEB. Like, that's amazing, to get them ready for middle school.
Absolutely.
And the LINK for the high school, because we graduate about 1,500, so having 1,500 kids participate means pretty much everybody.
They're very popular, and our staff are amazing. So I cannot speak highly enough of what happens in the summer to launch those WEB and LINK for our students, our staff, our student advisors, the upperclassmen that work with them. It is amazing. So if you get the opportunity, come see it.
So then, are the staff and parents and students, do they really notice how much of a smoother transition it is for the children?
I believe so, but you know, that's a great question that we probably should start gathering some additional data on. It would be hard, because we don't, because others have, because you haven't been through the transition, it would be hard to make a comparison, but you know, we do get some feedback on what that looks like, but it's a great question.
I'm sure like some of the middle school teachers who have had students in the past who haven't done it, you know, would be able to see a difference. And then, I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can anecdotally answer your question. So I have, my son is going into sixth grade, so we just experienced WEB, and I will say, that was really student-led, parents weren't involved. We basically got a ride either through PCCS transportation or dropped off, and had an immersive morning at the middle school, and I think it really calmed some nerves, you know? Got to practice using a locker, and understanding how a combination lock works, and just overall feeling a little bit more confident going into next week. So I think.
Nice. Thank you.
It worked for my kiddo. I just have a question, you know, you shared a lot about the enrollment numbers and the success about the summer program, I think that's great. How does that compare to last year? I know last year, we piloted quite a bit too, but did we see increased enrollment? Did we see something similar?
It's similar. So I believe last year, we had around 7,300 enrollments. Unique students were about the same and stuff, so it's similar to that. One thing that's really interesting to note, though, is there was one less programming that we weren't able to run this summer because of funding, because the funding source had been fully expensed, which was tutoring, which was a pretty big number. So if you look at comparison numbers, if you were to pull that number out, we probably had an increase in actual enrollments and numbers of students in the programs comparatively that we ran this year, compared to last year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Great presentation, great energy. Clearly, the start of school has amped you up as well, so fantastic.
See that, I'm just really tired, it's been a long day.
Well, thanks for bringing it tonight. With respect to the costs that we have next year, I know that we oftentimes have opportunities to provide scholarships or defer those costs for families, where this would be a burden for them. I assume we'll do that even as we add those modest costs in the future?
Yes. And also, I want to assure everyone that if there is a grant out there that we can find, we will find it and we will write it, because we're pretty good at that, so.
Thank you.
With the costs, thank you for the great presentation.
Thanks.
I would love seeing this presentation. As far as the costs go, WEB and LINK, I know there's been questions in the past about whether we'd be able to run it because of funding. Would they be cost-based programs as well, or?
You know, I'm going to answer this question. I don't think they have been historically, but to be honest, my entire time here has either been COVID or post-COVID, so I'm going to actually phone a friend here and ask either Anthony or Hal, was there ever a cost that you are aware of for WEB or LINK?
There wasn't a cost, but there was a year that we thought we weren't going to be able to run it because of the funding.
Gotcha, yep, so.
Yeah, so, okay, so we can still.
It's a commitment to, for us, to do good, solid transitions for our students.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, great presentation and great questions by my colleagues, and love hearing that the LINK program and the WEB program continue, and you're getting great participation. With regard to question, and I want to sort of build off of what Member McCoyn asked, in terms of measuring the impact, so I saw that some of the programs have academic components, the purpose of those programs. What systems are in place to evaluate the long-term impact of those programs, and will we get that data?
Yep. One of the challenges with short programs, short-time programs, is extrapolating that from everything else that's happening. So we'll share the data on student performance and track the student, so we will bring that back. Understanding that this is not done in isolation of other things, so it's sometimes hard to say, it's this one thing that made this difference. But yes, we'll bring you back, we'll circle back around with that, so. And one last thing I would like to say, because I was a bit remiss, and I'm glad somebody brought this up, which is, thank you to transportation, because we had two or three times the ridership in summer transportation this year. Thank you to Nutrition Services, who fed our students every day and stuff, and just thank you to, you know, we had so many people across this district, to what Dr. Merritt always talks about as a village, the village really comes together in the summer to make this happen. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to the Canton High School Cobra logo presentation.
All right, thank you, President Christensen. On November 28th, 2023, the Board of Education approved a resolution to adopt Cobras as the new mascot for Canton High School. The team has gone to work with our students to bring forward a recommendation for the Cobra design of the mascot and the logo. So this evening, we have to share a Canton mascot transition plan and a recommendation for this mascot logo. Our Executive Director of High Schools, Mr. Hal Hurd, and our Principal of Canton High School, Principal David Reed Norwalk. So at this point, I will turn the presentation over to them. Just as a reminder, this will be a recommendation as a first read of a couple of weeks, to ask any questions that you may have, and we'll come back again at the next meeting on September the 10th for consideration of a final read for this recommendation of design. Mr. Hurd.
Good evening, Dr. Merritt and members of the Board of Education. We're here to present the recommendation to adopt the Canton Cobras mascot and logo design for Canton High School. I'll begin outlining the process that led us to this particular point. We established a student mascot selection committee. We put out an open call for mascot submissions from our students. We opened voting to current Canton High School students, as well as those students in the seventh and eighth grade that are slated to attend Canton High School. And as you, as was stated a little bit earlier, last November, the Board was approved a resolution to adopt Cobras as the new mascot for Canton High School. So throughout this process of selecting a mascot, it's been pretty inclusive, ensuring that a student voice was at the forefront of the transition. Next here, you'll see where we are with our new word mark design. This is our main design mark for Canton Cobras. We will display other versions of the mascot and other mascot renderings in later slides. This particular design will provide flexibility in various uses, while maintaining a consistent brand identity for us. I want to emphasize that this new mascot does not change, or does not erase our history. Those winning seasons, records, plaques, other cherished memories will remain intact. Moreover, our school colors will remain the same. The transition is about moving forward while honoring our past. The trophies and other accolades housed in Phase III will still display the Chief's name, and we'll be creating a historical exhibit to commemorate the achievements of students from 1972 until June of 2024. Now I'll hand it over to Principal Reed Norwalk.
All right. Thank you. So that was the first part of our challenge, was to get the mascot itself, and then the next one you see is to work on the logo design, again, the reason why we're here today. So we used a similar process, where we put a form out to students, and we invited the entire student body, students even down to seventh grade, who knew they were going to be heading to Canton, to send in some drawings, some inspiration pieces, and some ideas of what would work as a mascot. It needed to align with our original guidelines of originality, symbolism, cultural sensitivity, reflecting schools' values and missions. It also, as you're stepping into a logo, it needed to function as a graphic design. So a square orientation, it needed to be powerful. Cobra can be terrifying, a lot of people do point out that, you know, snakes carry a lot of load for people. So while powerful, we want it to also be inviting for our students, relatable, inspiring, but try not to be scary, to really carry character without too much intimidation. You're really looking at two to three colors, working in a black and white, and detailed yet simple for various print formats, like screen printing, embroidery, hats, other gear. So as we got those submissions from the students, and there's some examples, some of the student designs really evolved into an incredible collaborative opportunity, where the students, you see some of the designs are sending like some side views, a badge, or working off of the C with the teeth, and then some profiles and other pieces, sometimes done with hand drawings, sometimes done with computer history of an AI. But to take that and really capture how the students in symbol represented the values of Canton. So of the 39 submissions, we had, the ones that met the criteria, we sent to our designer to work off of and to polish that into a professional piece. And all the students that were a part of this in submitting a design, we really are grateful for. They are the reason we're able to make this design. So as you see at the bottom part, the artist will receive a framed print of the final mascot logo, recognition from us, and even a note to them, as well as Article of Canton School Spiritware, with that new Canton Cobras logo as we move forward, when we're ready for it. So then, which brings the next exciting part, and I was going to ask Mr. Bertschler to stand up, it was finding the person who really would have the skill and the understanding to be able to do this for us. And so, we, through the interview process, what met was different designers, but really lasered in on Zane Bertschler. He's a Canton graduate, he knows the community, understands a lot of the meaning behind this, that it's a very important moment, and a sensitive moment, but also has design professional experience with companies like TaylorMade, where you see things like on golf balls, or club covers, and other things that really work on specializing in character design, branding, and merchandising creation, that would really give character to our logo. So when we met with him, and anybody we were looking for this, we wanted them to, again, stay true to our vision and mission, but also incorporating those values and the identity of Canton, like how you do that graphically is so important, and really use the student inspiration as what engenders this creation, like to really be true to that and do it with fidelity of that building of the logo. So as we do, I'm going to have Zane come on up and talk with us a little bit here and share some things. That's how it evolved into this piece. We wanted to have Zane kind of share some of the things. One, you get a lot of graphic design speak, like main mark, word mark, some pieces, want to kind of explain that a little bit, but also how it did evolve into this, and how he sees the elements of the student design in what became the logo.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. As David mentioned, I'm Zane Bertschler. I grew up here in Plymouth Canton, I probably could have walked here if it wasn't for the rain from my parents' house. So this is, you know, a very important, you know, big project, it's something that means a lot to me as a Canton grad, so getting the opportunity to do this was, you know, a huge deal for me personally, but also, I think, for, you know, the school district. So as you can see, you know, we've taken a lot of feedback from the students, they gave us, what, 39, 40-ish designs to kind of just look over and, you know, kind of take inspiration from. So we really polled a couple of those, you know, went with a direction that we think the students could really, you know, connect with, something that's a little bit younger, a little more fun, a little bit more, you know, as you were talking with the esports, you know, programs, and popularity, something that has that kind of look, something that's, you know, futuristic, that can grow, you know, through time, as, you know, this hopefully stays for quite a while. You know, it's pretty important that we have something that's unique and individual for the school, something that's not, you know, pulled from some other, you know, professional sports league, or, you know, a basic concept that, you know, doesn't really mean much, but something that gives character itself to Canton, you know, the school. So we took a lot of that inspiration. You can see the badge mark, you know, we got quite a few things with badge marks, we got quite a few of these snakes showing a lot of, a lot of motion, a lot of energy, and that's something that you want to really be able to bring to the school, so.
Thank you. And that was, if you recall, some of the things that the students pointed out, one like the Shelby Cobra, the power of that Cobra image as an icon of automobiles and horsepower, an apex predator, meaning strong, but also leadership. Leadership and being out and being unique is something very important to the Canton students, and this is a logo, as I pointed out, and it was an opportunity to do something that actually doesn't exist anywhere. So many logos are taken from NFL teams, and that's really the reason, well, somebody has it. And they wanted the reason to be because this is us, and this is something that can become us. And so that's part of the pieces you see as we go through some of the looks of it with a with a different backgrounds. But again, depending on where you'd put them, some of the views that you would have and some of the ways that the lettering would work either with the Cobra or on its own. And we also wanted to take the opportunity for the district to have something that we have defined what is ours. We know when we walk into certain places like Amire, there's, they're running off their own prints of things. But we know what is ours and on our uniforms, on our merchandise, on things that are Plymouth Canton schools and Canton in particular, it really makes a statement about our work. And so then, as we move through this, some of the things that we've been doing, and I was going to have, Hal and I are going to work together to close this off, is then some of the, just a physical transition then that this involves as well. Some of the things that you've seen there that we're working on is some of the removal of the previous design. And as Hal had said, storage of it and a plan to showcase those things that can be, those things that are really important, like a lot of the images, a lot of the trophies, all that has a lot of the imagery to it. But things like the, on the floor you see in the gym needs to move up to the Cobra. So pulling that off, getting that down, some banners, some other things. There's a lot of work of just removing things. And then being intentional as we move forward of the installation of the new designs. And as they're appropriate, like we said, we know that the lettering to the gym floor, that was something that we can do. But then as the logo comes in, how do we really do this in a way that, that we can be intentional about and works forward with our branding style? We first also worked through the fall was important that we would equip all our students who are out there on the field in Cobras, at least in statement with the wording. And then looking at our spring and winter ordering is coming up shortly. We have, we're usually months ahead in that ordering. And then ongoing from the winter, moving forward will be the installation of the new designs. Again, as is appropriate, like we say with the bond work, as we're doing the finished work on addition to the Canton Phase Three gym. And then other places where it makes sense and can be a part of that branding, even some of our exterior signage. But also noting that that block C is a central image as well. And our whole goal has been to kind of, in the way like a Michigan or Michigan State has their block letter as emblematic of them, so is that Canton block C. And you've seen that already on the buildings and some of our external signage that we have for that. So you see some of the opportunities too. This was really fun working with Zane. I personally am really excited to have that hat, you know, because I know the first thing you're saying is like, who is that? But as it starts to work, and this was some of showcasing again his talent, it was so cool for the students to submit designs and then have it go to a professional designer and come back as genuine articles, as real stuff. We often say these authentic learning experiences with students, and this is very authentic. And now we're working with the students and Student Voice and their agency to it is a big piece as we meet with our leadership groups, our student section leaders, our sports teams, about how we're also communicating and we're showcasing this piece too. And the students then are a part of working through marketing to get some of the store, school store designs, but then also some of their shirts. We're giving them a lot of input as they work with coaches and uniform ordering and all those pieces. So we're incorporating the Student Voice and, and those aspects of it as we move forward. And then also having it show up in their planning in the class meetings, pep assemblies, and as we've said, staff wear. So that's where we've been, as we said, through the transition. And now again, trying to do it, there's also the social transition, like I'm saying, like how we talk about this, what it means for us and how it helps us continue to unify. And which again leads us back to our, our whole purpose here to be is that recommendation to you for you to view of this, the word marks and the designs of the character to be the logo that goes with the Canton Cobras. And that concludes our presentation.
All right. So once again, you have a first reading before you as a resolution to adopt the recommended logo for the new Canton High School Cobra mascot as presented. We'd like to open up for any questions that you may have at this point. If you don't have any questions now, any additional questions you may have, we can also entertain before coming back for a final vote on September the 10th. Any questions?
I'll open it up over to Member Sidhu.
Thank you. Thanks for the great presentation and for bringing our guest, our designer. I appreciate the involvement of Student Voice at every level. And just a quick question for Zane. Did you, once you got the final drawing, did you go back to that student and say, is this kind of what your vision was or did you just take that and you built off of that?
No, we mostly just took that and built off of it. I've been working with Hal and David a lot and Carly as well. So we've gotten, all the feedback that I've received has been from them. I haven't had any direct communication with students.
And I appreciate the commentary about the uniqueness of this and this being Canton's unique logo and how it was developed by the students and including that student in, in the process. So I really appreciate that. Great design. I like all the different variations of that. Did I hear you correctly about the marketing plan? That you have a marketing, a pretty robust marketing plan in terms of rollout of this logo?
Well, the, you know, like that's the first part is when that logo is approved. And then working with, we have the school store and the merchandising, but we also have our athletic department. And what's nice about athletics, that works through the uniforms, but also a lot of things like our wrestling mats, yes, Dr. Merritt was even mentioning, signage on our buildings, what it's going to look like in that addition to it. So we really have the three areas that we're coordinating. The school store and the marketing within the school, the facilities, and then also our athletic department to have that coordinated about how we move forward and be intentional about it. Sometimes you just end up with a lot of branding everywhere.
Right.
And we want that branding to kind of work cohesively.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you for the great presentation and thank you for the, all the work on the design and the great design. I don't really have any questions, but I wanted to call out something that you said about that it's, it's, you know, youthful and fluid and, and more modern. I really like that. I really like the design. So thank you very much.
So I appreciate the originality that went into this and the collaboration that got us to this point. Much like Members Sidhu mentioned, we want to make sure that we've got good student input in this process. And I recognize there's a, a challenge because the Board has to approve this for the, this to become official. But school starts, starts next week. Is there a chance to preview or to roll this out to the, the student body prior to our next meeting on the 10th? So that if the community has feedback or input, we get that feedback before we vote on this?
Very much like to have the students be one of the first, the students and staff to be the first to, to see things and, and not, you know, find out through the community. And, and very much like to have it that way. So in terms of the opportunities, that's what we want to talk about. As you go through a design phase, sometimes you get to this critical mass of feedback and then you get to kind of coming together to be cohesive and move forward. But we very much are at the point where we want students to see this. We want to know what they're saying. And also coming in that conversation is a conversation about how we do implement it. Like you're asking, like what is that marketing plan? Well, we need the students to be a part of that. So we'd very much like to have them see it. We'd like to note if there is feedback that really is resonant about it, that we're like, oh yeah, that's something we see as well now or maybe we missed, and see what we can do with that, but while also moving forward too.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, when any designer designs something, you don't want to have a thousand people approving it or, or 6,000 people approving it. You know, that, that becomes a challenge. But that feedback is important to us as a board in this process. So if you have an opportunity to share this with those sixth, seventh and eighth graders, with the, with the incomings or with the students that you have in that first week and say, you know, if you have feedback, pass that information on to the, to, to the Board because they will be discussing this on the 10th. And, you know, Ms. Poir at the Student Voice and Action Committee, this is a great chance to again bring this forward to them. Because it's, there's been such a collaborative process getting us here. I want to make sure that that last mile, that last inch is still got the students included.
I appreciate that. We very much, that's why we wanted to get it here to you now so that we could have some permission to be able to share it next week when school starts.
Great. And for me, it's great design, love the way all the stuff is done, all the thoughtfulness that went into all the materials. I look forward to getting a sticker to apply to my waterfall.
Yeah, I echo my fellow Board members' sentiments. I think it's, it's really sharp, you know, great, great job. Thank you for carrying us along on this journey and helping us understand how the design came together. And I do really appreciate how much Student Voice was, was implemented in the, the first half. So thank you. I have no really any other questions or comments.
So I, I have a question about, so on slide 10, they have different, like they have a script.
Think that's one up. Okay.
Are those, would those be used for different things or?
Yes. And then you see like, so the flat face works really well, like the upper left to be on signs and pieces where the curved, it really presents better on curved surfaces or like on shirts that may cross your, your chest that would curve. And then also though for athletics, in particular, a lot of sports like to carry that script, like baseball, softball, and so utilize it there. Because it's another thing, exactly like, you know, Treasurer Kehoe was saying, too many versions really get confusing. And you get in a place where you don't have a style guide, like Zane is working with us to provide, where all of a sudden everything's out there and you got a, your own way to write Cobra and your own color and your own thing. And this substantiates exactly the things that are in that style guide and allows us to have more cohesiveness. So, so exactly. And then it allows us to use it with our merchandising, but really in particular also with our sports and on our facilities.
Okay. Thank you. I, I really like this. Thank you for all this work. Design is not my thing, but it's nice.
Okay, number of card?
Yeah, I think you're a great artist. I think you did a good job on it. I just have concerns because if we're going to be consistent with what we say, to me, this looks like something an Egyptian princess wear on her head. So I kind of, I mean, I think you do a good job and there's nothing against you. But when I go back to the whole reason why we changed everything, I, you know, I still see, you know, connections to other things that we brought up the first time around with the Chiefs. So that was my concern, many other things, you know, we had feathers on our other hat, helmets with our lacrosse team and that had to come off because somebody was upset about it. So I still can, you know, I get concerned because it does really, I've looked into this and it looks just like what they would put on their, you know, helmets or, or headpiece and kind of looks the same. So I, and I really struggle with the whole significance. I, I go back to, I mean, this is probably not pertinent right now, but I just go back to the whole struggle with what this represents as a Cobra compared to a Chief. So I just wanted to say that. But you're, you do an excellent job. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, no, no question. Just a quick comment echoing, I think, what my other fellow Board members, you know, hit on. This whole process started with Student Voice. I'm appreciative of how you kept Student Voice engaged and throughout. And I would agree with Treasurer Kehoe that maybe a focus group with some of the students, I believe it was 39 students, pulling a handful of them together just to make sure that the final product is, is truly in line with what they envisioned. You know, I know, I know it's a tight timeline, but I just feel like that would really close the loop in a, in a meaningful way. So, but, but great job. Love the design. Can't wait to rock the hat.
Okay, thank you.
Nice, one thing, one thing. I want to go to side.
Oh, yeah, please, yeah.
I have no questions. Thank you for the great presentation. I really liked the design.
Thank you. You had a question?
Yeah, well, I just wanted, because it came up of whether letting community be involved or not, but I really don't see the need because I don't think we really considered community the first time. So probably not necessary.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are on to Section D, Citizens Comments. Looks like we have a couple here. First up, we have Lisa Capatina.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Capatina. I'm a resident of Plymouth. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. The Food and Nutrition Mission Statement on your website reads, "We believe that children who learn to make healthy food choices and are physically active at school will continue these habits into adulthood." As you recall, I support that and brought my concern about this mission not matching the food you offer our students. After which I further found nutrition was not one of the metrics used to determine school meals. Instead, I was informed you use USDA meal pattern guidelines for menu choices. There, I, excuse me, I challenge you to look at their current guidelines and their resulting outcomes. Fact, according to the American Academy of Child in 2023, approximately 20% of US children were not just overweight, but obese. Fact, 30% of teens have pre-diabetes. Fact, children are now being diagnosed with fatty liver disease. This is new. I come before you again with a renewed appeal to this Board for the following reasons. The USDA is finally making changes to limit sugar in school meals. However, they will not be implemented until January of 2025. Until your school menu options are posted, that concern, concern still lingers. In addition, Governor Whitmer has approved another free breakfast and lunch program for all Michigan public school students. Now let me be clear again. I am not in favor of one child going away hungry. My concern still is that not only is $160 million appropriated, this year an additional 40 million. So 200 million of state funds are being used to feed our children. In theory, that is a huge gift, but it should come with responsibility to feed our youth food that is healthy and food that's not laden with toxic chemicals. Now that PCCS has an additional nutrition hire in Kayla McDaniel as your Director of Food and Nutrition, together with proposed USDA changes, I challenge you to honor your own bylaw, 8510, under category wellness. The Board believes the effort to support the development of healthy behaviors and habits with regard to eating and exercise cannot be accomplished by schools alone. It is necessary for not only the staff, but also parents and the public at large to be involved and support and model. I am here for that reason and I challenge you to do the same for our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have Nicole, is it Bird? Reed, oh Reed, I'm sorry. I misread that. Thank you. Okay.
Hello, everyone. As most of you know, my name is Nicole Reed and I am the mom of an ambulatory wheelchair user at the high schools. I am very aware, however, that I am speaking to the business entity of our district, the one responsible for fiscal decision-making for our school district. To that end, I would like to speak today on mission drift, funding and election cycles. Mission drift happens when fiscal decisions start being made that no longer align with the mission of a nonprofit entity. The core mission of a public school is to educate its students. To do this, a school must provide for the basic needs of those students while in their care. When we start to prioritize pool equity and rooms built for clubs that just happen to bring in million dollar grants above core infrastructure projects that impact the basic needs of students, there's a good chance that miss, mission drift is occurring. Now, mission drift for a traditional 501(c) corporation would have devastating impacts on their funding as well as their tax exempt status. I'm not exactly sure how that works for a government entity as a school district, but I'm sure that there are some repercussions. If you know, please feel free to enlighten me at a later time. But anything, as I said, anything that has the potential to jeopardize the funding of our schools must be taken seriously. Another issue that has the potential to negatively impact funding received by the district are the open civil rights investigations. The Federal Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights shows eight open federal investigations against this district. That is eight cases in which the consequences of non-compliance are the reduction or removal of federal funds. Again, anything that has the potential to jeopardize the funding of our school district must be given priority. As we move through this election cycle, a lot of voters are thinking about responsibility. We think about those hard decisions that are not flashy and don't get press releases, but that provide for the basic needs of others. As elected officials, I would invite you to look again at these areas that are poised to jeopardize the district's funding, make clear in your mind what every child needs in order to learn and lean into making financially, fiscally responsible decisions that are rooted in mission and do not jeopardize our school's funding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes Citizens Comments. Now we are on to action items and discussion. First up, we have action item number 25-08-07. Consider approval of a resolution to appoint MASP voting delegates at the 2024 Assembly. This is a first. This is a first and final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to appoint MASV voting delegates at the 2024 Assembly. First and final reading, action item 250807. Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Wilson. All right. Can we open this up for discussion? I think we had a few volunteers who, who wanted to throw their name in the hat for the delegate.
I believe it's a Newcomer and myself, right?
And we can.
We could add four, so if there's, if we have two more people, we can add them to this.
Right. Can you remind the team, when is the delegate assembly?
October 24th. And it's at 7:00 PM.
In Lansing, right?
In Lansing.
Yeah. Not Traverse City.
Does anyone else have any interest in becoming a delegate for our district? No? Okay, so it sounds like both Treasurer Kehoe and Members Sidhu will be representing us there. Any other questions or comments before we vote?
Thanks for doing it.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you volunteering for that. Okay, those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, 7-0. All right. We did have an, an additional item that we wanted to discuss. This was at our special board meeting yesterday around setting dates for the superintendent evaluation check-ins. Since we all have some time together and can look at our calendars, can we look at a couple of dates for those? Diane, can you remind us what month we, we met last year? Maybe we can focus in on those.
So if we, let's just kind of jump in and help while she's looking that up. If you all have access to the master board calendar, we have an initial check-in was in November. So we currently have a November of 2024 would be our first opportunity to come together. Last year, we had our second one in February. And then our third check-in was in April. Then we had our final, we had a several valve in June and a final valve in June as well. So if we want to start possibly looking at the month of November to see if we could find or agree upon an initial check-in date.
Now remind me, did we have our evaluation tied to a regular scheduled board meeting or do we do those as separate?
We did this as a separate meeting.
Madam President, I do have a question about that. I do wonder if it would be helpful or if possible to tie it to at least one of the board meetings. Again, I don't know how much time we need.
Meeting before?
Before or after as like a special meeting?
So we met for more than an hour the last time. So that means that we'd have to.
So I'm, I'm throwing out like a 5:30 to 7:00. And again, my wondering is, is that, do you think that's enough time?
And when are the policy meetings? Are they?
The second.
The second?
The second meeting.
So if we were to do it the first meeting, that is November 12th.
Right.
That would work fine for me to start at 5:30.
It, it works with my schedule too.
It doesn't work for mine, but most of November is off limits for me because I might be traveling for work.
Okay. How about you, Dr. Merritt? Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Why don't we tentatively pencil that in for the 5:30 to 7:00? Does an hour and a half seem okay for you?
I think we'd want to do, for the first quarter and the third quarter, we can do that, that. But for the mid-year one, because we have a deeper discussion, I think we want to probably have a separate meeting for that.
Yeah, I think that's a fair suggestion. I like that.
All right, I'm plugging this into our calendar and then Diane will follow up with a board invite, calendar invite.
Okay. Okay, so the next one, which would be the mid-year, would, was in February, correct?
It was in February.
Yes.
Is that, hold on. It feels like we need to meet sooner than February. If we're going to have four of them.
I agree. I agree with Member Kehoe.
Either that or we should have met like in.
October?
Yeah, because we, we have to do the superintendent evaluation in June. And so if we meet in February, that just doesn't feel like a big point. Or if we do in February, maybe it's early February.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's right. So last year we had three and then we had the regular valuation, which is the fourth.
Yeah, maybe we do, if we could do early February and then we do another one in like April, that would, that would feel.
Sure.
I'm just.
So did you want to do it before a board meeting again or?
No, I think this one we need more time because it's a mid-year.
Okay, check-in. Okay. So how about February 3rd or 4th? That's pretty early in the month.
And our regular board meeting is on?
Is on, yeah, following.
I, I'm not available on the 3rd, but could we do later in that week? Maybe the 6th?
We would have FNO that day, right? Prior to the board meeting?
We don't have the new FNO calendar yet, I don't think, but they would be, they would be that, that day.
Yeah.
So we can do it after FNO.
Yeah, we could.
But it would be, so I would say to be safe, we do.
6:30?
6:30.
6:30 on the 6th of February, does that work for the team?
Sounds good now.
Sounds good now, yeah. Okay. All right.
And then April is the next one?
Yes. Okay, and our board meetings in April are scheduled on what dates?
8th and 22th.
8th and 22th. Okay.
We need to run the 8th because the policy would be on the.
Correct.
The, the 22nd.
Yep. So does the 8th prior to our regularly scheduled board meeting work for the team from 5:30 to 7:00? Works for me too. Yes? Okay. Do we want to start with those three dates or do we want to go all the way through to the, the final evaluation?
Do we get your, get your time again for me?
April 8th at 5:30. Does that work for you, Dr. Merritt?
Yes.
Personally, we suggest that we wait and see what the finals can be because we need, like we have usually the superintendent self-evaluation.
Right.
There's a series of other meetings and it depends on
Yeah.
how these first three check-ins go.
Yep.
As to how much time we might need for those other ones.
Okay.
That's, that's my personal perspective.
That's fine. I think this is building out our calendar. We'll just, the next check-in, we'll just be, kind of touch base again to see how we want to schedule that out.
And we should be able to see sooner as to how the process is going. I mean, we're kind of getting into the rhythm. We can know whether we need to have dedicated meetings for that check-in or ones that we can do before the, the board meeting.
Okay. All right. Does that work for everybody else? Okay, great. Thank you. And then I know we have one more item for discussion. Open that up to Member Wilson.
Yes, thank you. So I, you know, I did want to officially, officially announce that I'll be stepping down my position as Board of Education member effective September 9th. Not a, not an easy decision by any stretch of the imagination as, you know, and I, I really did struggle with how much to share, but I feel that it is important because so many people have been supported during my time on the board and, and, you know, it's an elective position. And so as many of you know, I've lost both my parents in the, in the last year. That's been tough within itself. But in addition to that, you know, from a work standpoint, being the CEO of Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern Michigan, we've done some amazing work that has put us in the national spotlight and that's causing me to travel much more and, and just the explosive growth that we've experienced over the last five years really demands more of my time. But, but the truth is, I think I could have pushed through that piece. But, but being very transparent, losing both parents has been really tough. And, and what I've come to realize is I need to create some space to, to really process that. And, you know, ultimately, I preach to my kids often that you need to put your own, you know, air mask on and, and make sure that you're taking care of yourself. And, and that's what I feel like I need to do at this time. But I do want to thank, you know, each of you, Dr. Merritt and the students. You know, it's, it's truly been an honor to, to serve this district and work with the students and, you know, see the, the growth of the district last year. I, I mean, I think I couldn't have probably picked a, a better time to, to step down when you look at all of the major accomplishments the, the district had last year. And to know that I, I played a small part in that is, is very humbling and I, I appreciate it. So September 9th will be my, my, my last day. I'll work with the board and, and Dr. Merritt to transition during that time. But, but know that you'll always have a strong advocate in myself and maybe I'll come back and do a citizen comment from time to time just to annoy you guys. But, but no, I, I really do. And last thing I'll say is, you know, it wasn't the easiest road. You know, walked into a lot at a very critical time with the district. But the thing I know is that you grow, you know, personally and professionally when you chase, when you face tough times. And, and I think the district went through that and I know I went through that personally. And, and I think everybody including is, is coming out much stronger and better. So once again, thank you guys for, for all of your support.
Thank you for your service, Sean. We really appreciate it. Your voice has been very valued on this board. So thank you for your time with us.
Made a big difference. You'll be missed. Thank you.
Okay, that is the end of our meeting. So that concludes, we'll adjourn at 8:26 PM. Thank you, everybody.